Recording in progress.
All right, I'd like to call the July 25th, 2022 regular meeting of the Shoreline City Council to order. Will you please join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Scully?
President.
Deputy Mayor Robertson?
Here.
Councilmember Ramsdale? Councilmember Mark?
Present.
Councilmember McConnell? Councilmember Poby?
Hear.
Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Ramsdale indicated he would need to be absent for personal reasons. Is there a motion related to that?
So moved.
All right, is there a second? Deputy Mayor?
Second.
And I note that Councilmember McConnell joined just 30 seconds ago. Is there any opposition to excusing Councilmember Ramsdale for personal reasons? Seeing none, Councilmember Ramsdale is excused. Next up is approval of the agenda. Are there any requests to change the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved as proposed, and next up is the report of the city manager, Ms. Terry. Is she carrying the microphone?
Yeah. I think you have to press it.
I know.
There we go.
Sorry.
We couldn't hear you.
Hot temperatures with highs in the 90s are forecast for most of the Puget Sound region Tuesday through Friday of this week. And when temperatures start to rise, the danger for heat-related illnesses is very real and can happen very quickly. So some professional advice that we've been given is for yourself and for your family, to keep them healthy by drinking plenty of water, spending time in an air-conditioned place such as the Shoreline Library in Richmond Beach Library if you do not have that available to you at your home. Avoid outdoor activities during the hottest part of the day. If you must be outside, take frequent breaks. Never leave children or pets in a vehicle. And older adults, young children, and people with mental illness and chronic diseases are at the highest risk for heat-related illness. So please check in on those that you may know who may be vulnerable. I do know that both libraries will be allowing people to be there to stay cool. The city is supporting that effort by providing some volunteers and having some light snacks available at both of those locations. For more heat safety tips, you can visit shorelinewa.gov/news. The city is working on new regulations that would allow cottage housing developments in Shoreline. We would like your help deciding what cottage housing should look like in the city. Your feedback will help us write these regulations. You can visit shorelinewa.gov/cottagehousing for more information and then link to the survey. And the city's annual lunchtime concert series continues on Tuesday, July 26. M. Pennist will be doing a steel drum performance at Paramount School Park. The lunchtime series takes place every Tuesday at noon through August 2 in parks across the city. You can take a lunch break in the park and enjoy a free concert in the great outdoors of Shoreline. The full lineup of concerts and other summer event dates are on the city's web calendar at shorelinewa.gov. And you can come to Cromwell Park each Tuesday from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. through August 2 to sing your heart out. Karaoke is free and open to everyone. This is a family-friendly event. And the Shoreline Farmers Market has been having a great season in its new location at Shoreline Park and Ride at North 192nd Street and Aurora Avenue. The market continues every Saturday through October 1 from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And you can visit for a variety of fresh Washington produce and organic meats, and showcases local farms, artisans, and musicians. Shop for local produce, fresh berries, artisan crafts, and an array of tempting treats. EBT and SNAP cards are accepted. Many vendors also accept WIC and senior FMNP checks. Please visit shorelinefarmersmarket.org for all of the details. And just a public reminder that there is going to be a city council salary commission meeting tomorrow evening at 5:00 p.m. In room 440, you can view the meeting remotely via Microsoft Teams. And the Parks Recreation Cultural Services/Tree Board will meet on Thursday, July 28 at 6:00 p.m. And the agenda is a tour of local parks. You can get more information about these meetings and other events and happenings by visiting the city's calendar at shorelinewa.gov/calender. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. Next up are council reports. Are there any council reports this evening? All right, seeing none, I actually have a few things to report. I attended the Lake Ballinger Forum meeting this last week, and we discussed a project from Washtot that is going to be moving forward with hopefully broadening some culverts for fish passage. The concern is that parts of Shoreline and Lake Forest Park might have an increased risk of flooding. Staff is working with them to make sure that we can get the environmental benefits accomplished while still not putting our residents at risk. Also attended the Raya 8 Salmon Recovery Council, and I have good news on fish, which doesn't happen very often. The numbers at the Ballard Locks for Coho, which is silver salmon, are double what they'd anticipated, counting both hatchery and wild-caught fish. That's the great news. The bad news is, it's still 1/10 of what we need to get to a sustainable population for Lake Washington. But quite frankly, if we're having any good news on fish, I'm happy. And lastly, I participated this morning in the entry conference for the state audits, and one of the questions they asked me is, are you aware of any problems or complaints about the city's finances? And I'm always happy to live in a city where I have to say, not only do I not know of any, I haven't heard of any. I'm not aware of any problems with the way our finance team runs it. So that audit is kicking off, and we will get the results later this year. Any further council reports? Next up is public comment. We have two people signed up remotely, and there is no one in the audience, so it'll be three minutes per person. It's an opportunity for citizens to comment on anything of concern, whether it's on the agenda or not. Three minutes tonight, and we ask that citizens begin their comments with their name and city of residence. Ms. Simmelcheck Smith, will you please go ahead?
Yes, our first speaker is Anne Brask.
Yeah, hi. Thank you so much. Hope you can hear me okay. My name is Anne Brask, and thank you, councilmembers, for having me this evening. I'm the director of planning at Abodoo. We're an ADU company based out of Redwood City and Seattle. We operate all up and down the West Coast. I'm here tonight on behalf of homeowners at 17339 First Avenue. We've been working with them for some time, probably over six months, to help install an accessory dwelling unit in their rear yard. The ADU will be used for the couple's mother to age in place in close proximity to their family. They have a sizable backyard, they live in a cul-de-sac, and they have an existing garage and driveway. However, we've hit a major barrier because of the parking requirements triggered by the ADU. We're 0.4 miles from the closest transit stop, so parking is not exempt for this ADU because it needs to be a quarter mile. We can also only provide tandem parking because of the existing driveway width and the existing curb cut. On-street parking does not count towards our requirements, even though neighbors clearly park in the street. I'd like to emphasize that this ADU is for a family member, so parking tandem would only result in heightened family communication, if at all. We've gone through a lot of back-and-forth with planners on any way for this to be exempt through waivers, variances, deed recordings, and we've had no luck, and we're told that the code requires the parking. We're also told that Shoreline is ADU-friendly, and is going to look at their ADU ordinance in the future. And I heard you all talking about cottage housing ordinances too, which is great, but as it stands, we're out of luck. Out of luck means even more time for these homeowners and their grandmother, a significant amount of more money to widen the driveway, install a retaining wall, put down concrete or gravel, and place an 8-foot-by-16-foot pad down in the front yard for a parking spot. I won't get into how this impacts the curb appeal of the home, nor how it clearly contradicts the city's permeable coverage priorities. And this is all for an ADU that's less than 600 square feet for a grandmother to live in. Obviously, I'd like the city council to do anything in their power to help us waive this parking requirement. I know you all have a lot on your plate, and making ADUs easier to install is a very low-hanging fruit. Like you all, to consider that this requirement sends a message that Shoreline is in fact not ADU-friendly. It tells me that Shoreline is a city that prioritizes cars over people. If Shoreline doesn't want to be the type of city, I'd strongly urge you all to take quick action, or at least start by removing this one barrier for ADUs. I used to work in the public sector. I know that things take time, but I also know that there are leaders that care about housing and know how to act fast, that the city can make things happen, and take a stand on small requirements that mean a lot to homeowners. I'd also like to add that I'm happy to volunteer myself to further discussing ADUs, barriers that Abodoo sees, and creative ways to get more housing in your city. Right on time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brask.
Next up is Nancy Morris.
Yes, Nancy Morris, Shoreline. An excessive heat advisory has been issued for the Puget Sound. That will be dangerous for many people, pets, and wildlife. We know the Shoreline Environmental Department is asking council to declare a climate emergency on August 15. Things are serious. There is no clear path ahead on how to address climate emergencies that all will embrace. Many possibilities exist but are sidetracked by dangerous lack of political will and action. One local example, the Navy's Blue Angels coming in August. A typical air show generates 300,000 pounds or 136 metric tons of CO2 into the air in a single show. That is the same as 30 cars driving 30 miles round trip for one year at 22 miles per gallon. Some think if we stop using cars and use light rail and develop mini-apartment complexes in a frenzy without wise design, and continue to clearcut our mature urban forest trees, that somehow this will be a solution to our local climate emergency. Our climate emergency challenges will not simply be solved by getting out of cars and living in tall box-like apartments requiring intense air conditioning to survive. Buildings stay cooler surrounded by mature trees. One person using light rail to cut CO2 from one car does not equate to what one mature tree can do. Each tree is part of a tree grove, a tree canopy, an urban forest of hundreds of trees, and all combined to reduce greenhouse gases, air pollution, and moderate the ambient temperature. We must recognize that Shoreline's building and development codes are still not ambitious enough to do what is necessary to fully realize a livable, sustainable city going forward in this climate crisis. People can still go to Seafair, watch the Blue Angels, along with drastic amounts of CO2 emitted by them in one show. You, as a council, can continue to be out of sync with increasing climate impacts by allowing mature trees to be clearcut by developers, or you can act quickly with wisdom and courage to inquire design around our mature trees and tree grows at every opportunity. It is imperative to preserve now what we are still blessed to have here in Shoreline with our mature trees and urban forests. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. That concludes public comment for this evening. Next up is the consent calendar. Deputy Mayor Robertson?
I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar.
Second, ma'am.
So motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the votes?
Councilmember Poby?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramsdale is absent. Councilmember Mark?
Aye.
Mayor Scully?
Aye.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
And Councilmember McConnell?
Aye.
The consent calendar passes unanimously. Next up is Action Item 8A, which is the appointment of pro and con members for Proposition 1, and I believe Mr. Bratton will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. So last week, you adopted Resolution 492, placing a maintenance and operations levy for public safety and community services on the November 8 general election ballot. One of your responsibilities after placing a measure on the ballot is to appoint pro and con committees to write statements in support of or opposition to the ballot measure. Pro and con committee's statements will then go in the voter's pamphlet, along with the city's explanatory statement, which is attached to the staff report as Attachment E. You can appoint no more than three people for each committee. However, committee members can seek the advice of anyone they wish in drafting their statements. Applications were available online between June 28 and July 21. We sent a press release to Shoreline Area News. We posted the release on our website. We also pushed information out through our e-notification system and through social media. And we also sent emails to former members of this year's Financial Sustainability Citizens Advisory Committee. We received a total of three applications for pro committee and no applications for the con committee. Tonight, you will appoint committee members. The appointments are due to King County Elections by 4:30 on August 2. Once you have made your appointments, I will notify the committee members, and then it will be up to them to submit the statements and rebuttals to King County Elections on their due dates. Statements are due by August 9, and the rebuttals will be due August 11. The applications under consideration for the pro committee are from Lincoln Ferris, Mary Ellen Stone, and John Filke. And again, we didn't receive any applications for the con committee. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
This is an action item, so we usually start with a motion. Is there a motion related to Action Item 8A? Deputy Mayor Robertson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we appoint Lincoln Ferris, Mary Ellen Stone, and John Filke to the pro committee.
Second.
Motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, it's very encouraging to see that all three of these individuals participated in the PFAC. Did I say that? Is that the right acronym for this one? Yeah, so wonderful process. Glad they got to be part of it. And I know that Mary Ellen Stone has been on the pro committee in the past, so she's also very comfortable with the deadline process, the character count limit, some of the things that are nuances of this role. I think it'll be a great crew when we get them all together, when they get themselves together. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the votes?
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Mark?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramsdale is absent. Mayor Scully?
Aye.
Councilmember Poby?
Aye.
Councilmember McConnell?
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Bratton, and I think that concludes this action item. Next up is Study Item 9A, which is a discussion of the update of the wastewater rate study project and policy. And I believe Ms. Lane will be our main presenter and introducing some other folks as well.
The panelists for this presentation are moving over right now.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I am looking. There we go. I have the pleasure, actually, of introducing Gordon Wilson and Tagi Akar, who actually spoke with you back in April, to provide the latest update on our wastewater rate study. So back in April, council provided was presented with outcomes on some policy issues that you'll be reminded of this evening. And you provided guidance at that point, and we are back for the next check-in on that as we move forward with our rate study. So I'm going to turn it over to Gordon. Well, I'm not seeing Gordon yet. So, Tagi, are you able to take it away?
Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Can you share your screen?
Already. I will share my screen. Does that come through okay?
Yes, it did.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. So we'll be talking about a little bit of background on the analysis that we have been working on. We'll cover our main revenue requirement scenario, which is basically a forecast of current revenues under today's sewer rates, and then forecasting that against our current operating expenditures, and then those expenses related to funding the capital program, and then coming up with a capital funding strategy for the city's capital plan. We do have a couple of alternative scenarios, and those are really concentrated around some possible changes to the city's low-income program, both in eligibility, as well as possibly a change in the percentage discount and looking at what those rate impacts are. And then we'll get into a quick policy review and next steps, and Sarah will help present part of that along with Randy. So first off, the background portion of the presentation. As Sarah mentioned, you know, back on April 4, we're presenting the topics of three issue papers. We covered capital funding tools, some considerations regarding the low-income customer assistance programs, as well as in Issue Paper 3, some wastewater rate design options. Today's presentation will be the revenue requirement forecast, and then we'll be coming back in August to share the results of the updated general facilities charge, or GFC, charge. That GFC, that's not those monthly rates, it's those charges that are applicable to new connections as growth and development connect to the existing system. So when we're putting together a utility forecast, we want to make sure that rates are set to recover the cost of providing service. And typically, that'll be two types of costs. You have your operating costs, a lot of employee salaries and benefits, routine repair and maintenance. One notable item, the city contracts with both King County and the City of Edmonds for wastewater treatment. Primarily, King County serves most of the city. That's a significant expense item for the city's wastewater utility fund, also some bill processing costs. Those are, in general, those operating costs on the capital side. Most often, that's infrastructure repair and replacement, but can include projects that are related to expansions or upgrades that might be related to regulatory compliance. So when you put it all together, we want to make sure that your rates are covering not only fiscal policy achievements, so that will be covered in a future slide, things like operating and capital reserves. We want to ensure that rates are covering forecasted operating costs. And then the last two bars down here are related to the capital funding strategy. Depending on if and how much debt might be issued to fund part of the capital program, there would be principal and interest payments or annual debt service associated with that. And then, of course, a significant part of the capital program will be rate-funded. So when you add those together, that's your annual revenue needs, and we'll get into what that looks like here in just a few slides. So currently, the city has two types of charges. There's the local city charge, that's for covering costs such as maintaining collection lines and lift stations, general administration. And then on top of that, depending on whether it's King County or the City of Edmonds providing wastewater treatment services, there's an additional charge on top of the local charge. And those are broken up separately on customer bills. You can see for residents that are serviced by the City of Edmonds, the monthly rate would be about $48. For residents served by King County, as King County's treatment rates are higher than those of the City of Edmonds, they would be about $67 per month, but still relatively on the middle to low end of this survey group, with the exception of Edmonds, Redmond, and to the right all the way to Pacific. Those are cities that receive wastewater treatment by King County. A couple of slides ago, we talked about fiscal policies, and here's what we're recommending for this rate study. Two types of reserves, the operating reserve and the capital reserve. The operating reserve is in place to provide a liquidity cushion from the variations in when the revenues come in and when the fund has to pay expenses. So currently, the city has a policy of 20% of operations and maintenance costs. Based on the current budget, excluding treatment costs, that is about $1 million as a reserve target for the operating piece of that. On top of that would be a capital reserve, and this is essentially in place if there's unexpected capital projects, cost overruns on planned capital projects, or sometimes there's a local match requirement for some grant programs. So that's kind of the purpose for the capital reserve, and we're recommending that a reserve be set aside in an amount equal to about 1% of the utility's fixed assets. So that'd be about $500,000 on top of the 1.1 million operating reserve. But next up is rate-funded system reinvestment. This is not a reserve target, but it's a mechanism to help the city fund long-term infrastructure replacement needs. But typically, this is an annual predictable rate provision, so after the utility pays for its operating costs and possibly debt service, we want to make sure that revenues are sufficient to have enough left over to then set aside an amount each year to fund capital projects with cash. This can help mitigate the amount of debt a utility might need to fund a capital program. And so most often, this is based on annual depreciation expense. So currently for the city, that'd be about a target of $1.1 million. Lastly is debt service coverage. This is essentially in place if the city were to issue revenue bond debt. Typically, the minimum requirement would be that the city would set revenues to not only meet operating expenses but have enough left over to pay debt service with an additional 25% cushion. And all we're recommending is that, for planning purposes, the city target for an internal amount of 1.5 at least, so greater than that minimum target to provide a little bit more of a cushion there. We'll go through a few major study assumptions, so we'll take what we think this year's operating costs will be, and we forecast them going forward. Depending on the type of cost, those percentages will vary, but we work with city staff to review and come up with these numbers. Per customer growth, we are trying to be conservative here in assuming less than 1% growth per year. On the revenue side of things, we are projecting about $1 million per year for that GFC revenue that we talked about at the beginning of the presentation for the next two years. And then we taper that off to be a little bit more conservative in those out years in the forecast, down to about $500,000 per year. For debt service, as that is a component, as a part of the capital funding strategy in the scenarios that we'll get to in a few slides, we're assuming revenue bonds of the 20-year repayment, interest rate of about 5%, 1% interest costs, and no reserve requirement. And this last item, wanted to spend some time on it. This is the focus of a few of our alternative scenarios. So at this time, there's just over 300 customers enrolled in the low-income discount program, and those eligible customers would get a 50% discount on both the local and the treatment charges. So it's important note, and we'll come back to that when we get to the alternatives section. This is the operating forecast without any local increases, without taking into account the capital program. We see city operating expenses in this darker blue portion of the bar. Significantly more than that are these green bars. Those are King County treatment costs, and we know what their forecasted plan is for annual rate adjustments, so we built that into the model as well. And then on top of that, much smaller piece is the Edmonds treatment. So the stacked bars combined together are the financial obligations of the utility. Again, before we incorporate the capital funding strategy of debt services and all of some rate-funded capital, but wanted to give you a sense of where you're at today. Currently, an operating surplus does exist, but over time, we're forecasting that with cost inflation and those sorts of things, there'll be a forecasted deficit by 2041. And again, this doesn't take into account the capital program, which we'll talk about on the next slide. Through 2041, the system plan has identified about $218 million of capital projects, primarily pipe repair and replacement, but there are some lift stations and other types of projects. We've assumed an 80% execution factor, which would bring that total down from $218 million to $175 million over this 20-year period. And so for this scenario, we've come up with a capital funding strategy that's just over half debt-funded, over 35% rate-funded, with remainder coming from general facilities charge revenues, a portion of ARPA, and then some excess reserves that we can draw down without drawing below our recommended reserve targets. So when we incorporate that into the rate forecast, we come up with a rate adjustment plan. So again, these darker bars are the city's local operating expenses. On top of that are the treatment expenses, and then later on top of that, we have new debt service principal and interest payments associated with part of the borrowing for that capital funding strategy that we talked about on the previous slide here. And then on top of that, we have these gold portions of the bars. Those are to be rate-funded capital. So each year, rates are generating enough revenue to cover your operating expenses, new debt service, as well as set aside an amount that you can then pay for capital projects same year or save up in advance for future capital projects. So the percentages in the first four years, those work out to be about a $2.70 increase per month to the local rate. per month to the local rate. And again, this is the base case scenario. We'll be talking about some alternatives in a couple of slides, but this assumes no increase in the number of customers enrolled in the current program, so about 300 customers. And it also assumes that the city would maintain a 50% discount on both the local and the treatment charges. Then after that, we're forecasting about a 6% annual rate increase, and that's a little bit higher than our annual cost escalation, because those increases are designed not only to fund the operating expense increases over time, but also keep up with the capital funding strategy, which involves some borrowing, as well as maintaining and even growing this rate-funded capital over time in the gold portion of the stacked bars. So we've talked about percentages mostly on this slide. The next slide talks about what would the monthly bill impact be for, say, residential customers? And again, noting from the beginning of the presentation, we have the local rate for single-family customers, $17.48 per month. Whether it's King County or Edmonds, you can see those different rates. King County is nearly $50 per month on top of the $17.48. Combined for King County would be about $67 per month. Those single-family customers that are served by City of Edmonds would take the $17.48 plus the $30, $35. Their bill per month would be just under $48. So with the increased plan that we talked about on the previous slide, these percentages, for a King County customer, that would be approximately $5 to $6 per month for both the local and King County rate combined. For Edmonds, that would be about $4 to $5 per month, taking into account both the local and treatment rate for City of Edmonds. That's the base case. We've come up with a few different scenarios that focus on the rate impacts for changes to the low-income discount program. So one possibility is if the city were to partner with Seattle City Light, there's the possibility of reaching more low-income customers. Currently, there's about 300 customers enrolled in the low-income program. That number could reach nearly 2,200 customers, based on data that we have from Seattle City Light at this moment. So the no-change box, this is the scenario that we just reviewed on the previous slides, would be an annual increase to the local rate of about $2.70 per month, and then down to $1.75 per month. If the city were to expand eligibility, so that 2,200 customers would be eligible, while also maintaining the 50% discount on both the local and regional treatment costs, instead of $2.70 per month per year for the first four years, it would be $3.70 per month per year for the first four years. So about a dollar extra per month to expand the low-income discount program to 2,200 customers. We did model an in-between option, just for illustration purposes. If the city were to expand the low-income discount program to 2,200 customers, but reduce the discount from 50 to 25%, the impact would be about a 60 cent savings, you know, $3.10 per month instead of $3.70 per month. Important to point out, though, that those 300 customers that are currently receiving a 50% discount, if the city were to go to a 25% discount, their bill would go up anywhere between $15 to $20 per month, because they no longer be receiving that 50% discount. But wanted to show sort of the bookends, and then one middle option here. So in terms of rate impacts, before we hand it back to Randy and Sarah, we have a jurisdictional survey for single-family monthly wastewater rates. On the left there, you can see single-family customers serviced by Edmonds Treatment, about $48 per month. Depending on the scenario, would increase anywhere from $52, $53 per month, with the $53.28 being that expanded program with the 50% discount, so would leapfrog shoreline above Edmonds. And then we see here, City of Redmond, at $66 per month. And then we get back to shoreline for those residents that are served by King County. Currently, $67 per month. With an expansion of the low-income program at that 50% discount and the overall rate increases needed to fund the forecast, that would increase anywhere from $72 per month up to possibly $73 per month. So increasing above Lake Forest Park and Isiqua, but still well below the city's off-to-the-right Auburn through Pacific. So it gives you an idea of what those first-year impacts would be for not only funding the annual revenue requirement needs, but also expanding or adjusting the low-income discount in program. So with that, I'll hand it back to city staff, and they'll take the next few slides. And I'll, Sarah, I can advance these, just let me know.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Tagi. So in addition to the policy that Tagi spoke about, the financial policies and the question about our low-income rates, there's a related, but another policy question that we did not have FCSG look at, that we need guidance from council, and that's regarding reinstating late fees and interest charges. You might recall that the governor placed a moratorium on the collection of late fees and interest charges during the pandemic, and Ronald Board set policies that implemented those, and those, of course, then were carried over to the city. Now that the moratorium has been stopped, we need guidance on whether we should re-implement those late fees. And staff is recommending that we do reinstate the 10% late charge, but we also recommend that we eliminate the 8% interest that is currently being in our code. It has not been being collected. It actually creates a lot of administrative burden. We think the 10% late charge serves the purpose of having a consequence for being late, and that there is adequate other consequences, such as if they have to go to collections, they pay additional fees for that as well. We do recommend that we reinstate the refund request charge, and yet we don't think that we should reinstate the credit card processing fee, because the credit cards are now our primary form of payment, and particularly as we're encouraging more people to pay online, which reduces administrative burden. It really is a cost of doing business. So that is the other policy issue. We would love, appreciate guidance from council on. And with that, I'll turn it over to Randy to speak quickly about some evolving issues that will impact our decisions as we go forward.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, council. There's a few things in play that we were not able to work into the staff report, or this study, actually, that I wanted to give you a heads up about, because they may come back later to the council as we gain more experience and some studies are completed. In particular, we've been gaining experience as we've had the utility. We've been operating it for a number of years. We were doing the engineering and the permitting stuff in-house for about a year or so. But we, at the end of last year, or actually about the time we assumed the utility, we started a study that evaluated how planned development aligned with the actual development in the station areas. And the results of that study may indicate that we need more capital projects, an additional bump in capital projects to manage those flows out of those station areas than was planned for originally. We also have an ongoing INI study, Influent Infiltration Study, that may have projects come out of it to reduce inflow and infiltration, or may have projects come out of it to handle it there. Separate from those studies, and both those things may show up as capital projects for us, but we also have had some increased wastewater, or we have, our wastewater permit fees are still those that were moved over from Ronald, and they don't quite align with how we look at wastewater fees and having them cover the cost of it. And then there's been some additional supplemental requests that you'll see later in the budget process that weren't necessarily accounted for in this study. I think that's kind of, I bring that up as evolving issues, as part of growth and learning the system. So as I mentioned before, we may have some additional capital projects out of the studies. We'll discuss the operational items. There'll be supplemental requests in the budget. And then we are intending to bring an updated wastewater permit fee to match our other permit fees and how we do that business with this year's budget cycle. And there is in the appendix to, or the attachments to the staff report, those fees. So again, this is more of a heads up than any action item tonight, but I want to make the council where there are things moving that we're not able to capture in this particular study. And with that, I'll turn it back to Sarah for some policy discussion.
Great. So we just wanted to provide a slide that summarizes the policy direction we would like to receive from council tonight. So the first being around the low-income program expansion. The question is whether we want to maintain our current low-income program as is, or do we want to expand the reach of that low-income program out to include renters and all low-income customers? And this would be using the category, or the classification from Seattle City Lights, so customers that are qualified as low-income from Seattle City Light would then be able to receive a discount working through partnership with them. The question then, if council did choose to do that, was whether we would maintain that discount at 50%, or would we decrease the discount to 25% in recognition of the rate impact? Then on the question of CIP, currently, we are assuming the 80% execution factor for the CIP in this study. That doesn't mean that we're reducing the size of this CIP. We are simply acknowledging the fact that frequently, the projects don't get executed as planned, and so this allows us to fund as presented the CIP without delaying or decreasing the planned CIP and maintaining the rates. Additionally, we want confirmation on the financial policies that are being proposed, including the capital reserve target, the rate-funded system reinvestment, and the minimum debt service coverage, so we can incorporate those policies into our budget adoption. And then finally, around the recommendations on the wastewater fees that were suspended, the late fees, credit card fees, and refund processing fees during the pandemic. So next slide just summarizes again just our recommendations, and I can come back to that at the end after you've had a chance to ask any questions that you might have of either Gordon or Tagi, or Randy and I for that matter. So with that, I think, oh, I'll talk about next steps briefly. So again, the general facility charge update is underway. We think we've now booked that for August 8th. Based upon your guidance, FCSG will finalize their report, and we will have an official report from this, and then we'll have the final rates that'll be presented to you with the 2023-24 biennial budget in October. And those might change from the numbers you saw, and we'll be able to explain what those changes and impacts are, depending upon the items that Randy mentioned and the discussion on the general facilities charge. So with that, we'd be, like to turn it over and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Lane and all. Are there any questions or comments from council? Councilor Morgan?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Lane, and Mr. Aker, and all involved with this. You have done a thorough and informative job, and I really appreciate the detail. What happened to the Ronald balance, cash balance, when the city assumed?
The Ronald cash balance came over, and it is in the wastewater fund. So it is, it came over, and it has actually grown. So that was fully maintained within the wastewater fund.
So I'm trying to understand, as we talk about the financial, let's see what you call it, the priorities or the recommendations?
Policies.
Yeah, the policies, thank you. I'm trying to understand, are these dollars then on top of those dollars, or, so how much is there currently? Is there currently zero? So the million, 1.1 million, for instance, that you're suggesting as a capital reserve, does that not exist at all?
No, it doesn't, and I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Wilson to talk a little bit more about the study. But this, in general, that the study was assuming that cash balance is a starting point, so that the rate needs, and I think, I think one of the slides tried to capture that, to show the existing fund balance and how it was contributing, but...
I'll, by the way, for the record, I'm Gordon Wilson with FCS Group. The balance that was taken, came over with Ronald Wastewater District when the city assumed the district, became the beginning fund balance for the city's wastewater fund. And every year, the balance is adjusted with expenditures and revenues. So the rate revenues started to be collected into the city's fund, and expenses for employees and capital projects began to be spent out of it. So the balance goes up and down with the, with the relationship between expenditures and the revenues. And the goal, one of the reasons to pay attention to that balance over time is that when you have big capital projects in the future, you want to know that they're coming up so that you can build your balance if you need to in order to minimize the debt.
Got it. Completely agree. So when it says operating reserve target, maintain policy of 1.1 million, do we have 1.1 million right now? Or are we trying to make it up with the rate? That's what I'm trying to get to.
Tagi, correct me if I'm wrong. I think we're already there.
Yeah, I think we had nearly $7 million as of the beginning of the year. And so you're already there for the 1.1 million for the operating reserve target. On top of that would be the capital reserve target of $500,000. So you're fully meeting both of those and then some.
Perfect. That was my concern. I'm really concerned that both targets are too low. That being said, I can appreciate, I'm interested in your views. In my experience, that the capital reserve target, there are so many things that go wrong with projects that can cause you extra money that you didn't expect, or there can be some unknown that happens, and I'm curious why you think half a million is enough in that category.
I think I can address that. When you're forecasting a capital, a capital reserve does two things. One is it provides a cushion against unexpected costs or revenue drops or whatever, that, you know, it's a type of risk reserve, similar to the operating reserve. It's also a capital funding tool, the way of looking ahead and saying, we're going to need this much money by year six, and so let's plan ahead and start building our balances for that purpose. So usually in the forecast, you don't ever really hit that $500,000 minimum, or whatever that number is, a million. Usually, you're much higher than that, because your balance is going up and down with your capital program as you execute your capital program. What the, that, what was that number? Was it $500,000? Trying to remember.
It was $500,000 minimum, yes.
Yeah, $500,000. That is the minimum that we'd let the forecast drop down to for one year, you know, but then it bounces back up. So in a 20-year period, you'll see a lot of different capital fund balances. One of those years, it might be $500,000 or $600,000 or something like that. But the question for us is always, when do we require the rates to go up? You know, we're trying to not push the rates any more than we need. You know, we're trying to not push the rates any more than we need to.
Right.
And and so in that year, let's say there's a one year where it drops down to 500 or 600 or 700,000, you know, before bouncing back up. In that year, what you're saying is we want to have a minimum cushion, even though we have other resources, even though we could borrow, we have other ways of dealing with emergencies, but still, bad stuff happens, you still want to be able to have some kind of cushion. But if your cushion is too high, then you got to push your rates even more. And this is a hard forecast. You've got to push your rates a lot, and utilities go through waves of capital reinvestment. And you're entering a wave where you've you've got to reinvest. And that's that's hard for repairs. And so we're, you know, we, you know, reserves, if they do their job right, represents money you never spent. And the more of that money you lock up, then the more you have to push your rates.
And and I, you know, I clearly am used to having, would feel more comfortable having more money available for those unexpected, but I can appreciate what you're saying as in regards to rates. So the $2.70 that hypothetically is being discussed, that is the 30% rate funded capital projects primarily in addition to the operating cost increase? Is that is that how I should be reading it?
The 36% rate funded capital, 53% debt funded capital, that's the $2.70 that you were referring to.
So if we went for argument's sake to 40% rate funded capital and the lesser amount bond funded capital, would we be able to get more bang for our buck?
You'd have to push your rates harder.
Okay. So that's how you did that? That's how you did it?
Yeah, you can do that, but it just means the rates have to be even more severe.
That that's what I was particularly interested in trying to understand how that goes. I know we're not going to talk about GFC until next meeting, but if we collect more GFC than anticipated, where does that money go, Ms. Lane?
Fund balance.
Fund balance in wastewater.
Good news, we love it.
Yeah, yeah, it is a great thing. Does it go to capital or does it go to operating or it goes to whichever is desired?
Capital, has to go to capital legally.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the ability to ask questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Popey.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And thank you again for such a great presentation. I think you gave us a lot to think about about three months ago, and so we went back reviewing the notes. So that's great. Just want to clarify, Ms. Terry, this is now run as an enterprise fund?
It is an enterprise fund.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, great, that's what I thought. And so does it have the, is the policy separate from what the city has set in place in terms of either O and M reserve or capital reserve?
If I understand the question correctly, the enterprise fund reserves are separate from other fund reserves, like it's separate from the general fund.
Right.
It is the utility itself that is funded.
That's right, okay.
Yep, Sarah, feel free to correct me on anything I misstated.
That was correct, and and we can have some policies that might be different than our general operating policies for the general fund.
Okay, great, thank you. And so the 1.1, I was just curious, how many months of that, because there are regulations for minimum operations reserve, so how many months of that applies to this 1.1 million?
Togi, you want to answer that?
Yeah, 20% would be just over 70 days, so well over two months of operating expenses for the wastewater utility excluding treatment costs. The treatment costs are essentially a pass through as you collect it from utility customers, but then remit those revenues to either King County or City of Edmonds.
Okay, all right, that's great. Now, the next is about the numbers. So we have 3.70 and then $2. I really enjoy the flat rate through, of course, flat rates offers more revenue stability, so that's great. But then you threw up two numbers, 3.11 and then 2.200. Which of these numbers is driving the rates?
So if if the city were to fund its forecasted obligations while keeping the low income program the same as it is today, and there's roughly 300 customers currently enrolled, that's the $2.70 increase per month to the local, the city's local rate. And that would be 2.70 per month for the next four years. If you were to expand the low income discount program to reach roughly 2,200 customers, consistent with Seattle City Lights eligibility requirements, and maintain the 50% discount, that's where instead of $2.70 per month for four years, it would be $3.70 per month for four years.
Got it.
So it'd be an additional dollar per month over that four-year period.
Got it, okay.
Each year.
Okay. All right, I think this is for Ms. Lane. What's the refund request charge? What's the percentage if you have to refund somebody? Are you charging the person for asking for a refund? Is that what it is? And so if it's $50, what's the percent? How much do you charge?
You're on mute, Ms. Lane.
Great, thank you. I believe it's an $8 refund request fee. And yes, when somebody requests a refund, first we offer that they save that credit, right? The most cost effective for everybody is that we save the credit for their future bill. But frequently, generally, this comes up when people are closing their accounts. And so the cost just goes to offset the the cost of, it does not cover the cost of processing the refund, but it just seeks to help offset that cost.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. A few questions here. Just some clarification on Councilmember Mark's question. The biggest change in terms of where we need to build our reserves is for the rate funded system reinvestment, is that correct?
I would say it's kind of two-part. You know, one of the biggest drivers overall is funding the capital program. Part of that is debt funded, so we want to make sure that rates are covering forecasted new debt service, but also, yeah, maintaining and growing that rate funded component on an annual basis. So it's, both of those combined, the capital funding strategy is the main driver of the rate increases presented.
So I mean, we're trying to build our reserves, I mean, we're looking at 1.1 million in reserves plus the, based on 96, 93.6 million in projected debt, that'd be about 144,000, I believe, if my math is correct. The, so I mean, that those are the included, and how quickly, the question, reason I'm asking is, how quickly is it, are we trying to build up that reserve to that point in this model?
Currently, the city is meeting its reserve targets. So that's good, you know, you're already meeting those targets. But over time, as the city executes its capital program, that capital reserve, you know, 1% of a growing number would grow the capital reserve as well. But, you know, funding and meeting the reserves, I think, is a relatively small piece of what is going into the rate forecast.
Let me add one other thing, though, is one of those policy targets is the rate funded system reinvestment.
Right.
Which we're aiming for 100% of depreciation. Now, Togi, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we reached that goal near the end of the forecast period. We don't start out already doing that. That would cause too big of a rate spike. But we do push the rates to the point where we are eventually funding 100% of depreciation. And and that is, you know, all the other policies are easier. You know, once you reach your minimum operating, you're there. You know, you just, that's not, that's not the hard part. But but you, in order to borrow money and meet your debt service coverage, you have to cover your, the amount of the debt service plus a little bit more. That's what the 1.5 coverage ratio means. So that little, that extra little bit more goes toward your your rate funded system reinvestment. And and then eventually get the point where you're you're funding a lot of your capital from current rates rather than relying on debt. So, but that's not an immediate thing.
Okay, but so what I heard was that this is going to take the rate length of the study to get to that, or pretty much the length of the study. So we're looking at a really small, this is a very small thing, element in terms of the overall calculation and rate forecast, because it's divided up over the period of the study.
Well, it's a big part of the of the push to to increase, increase the rates. The reason I brought up that is, is you were talking about the minimum reserves, and the minimum reserves are are the easy part. Increasing the proportion of your spending that is current dollars going toward capital is the hard part. And and we do achieve that over time.
Okay.
Is that right, Togi? Is that how the model works?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question about the low income customers and how you, the SCL says there's about 2,000 or so individuals who qualify for their program. How many, do we have a sense if those 2,000, are they living in single-family structures currently or are part of these 2,000 living in multifamily currently? Do we know that?
We don't know the breakout of that, but they would be all, it's all SCL customers in Shoreline that have applied and qualified for their low income. So, you know, what the demographics are, alls we know is that they are low income and and that it's not distinguishing whether they're renters or owners, whereas our current program obviously is limited to senior homeowners. So this is, that's why it's such a large expansion of the program.
Right, but for the, for our purposes, because we do not bill to multifamily or at least over four units, I believe, is the definition of multifamily here, if a low in, if someone's qualifying for SCL's low income policy and living in a multi-unit structure, they're not getting a bill, so they would not qualify, they wouldn't get a 50% reduction because they're not currently paying a bill. So the 2,000 is sort of a maximum number, not necessarily what the, close to what the number is in terms of those people who are qualified for SCL or currently currently qualified for SCL, because we know there's people who are not, have not applied for the program, but also are living in a one to three unit house or.
Actually, to clarify, because of partnering with SCL, the the expectation is they would not receive a direct credit on their bill, they wouldn't get the discount on their bill, they would receive some sort of rebate through a partnership. And whether that, it might end up being a three-way partnership between Hope Link and Seattle City Light and the City of Shoreline. But we're, so we're researching those options. So that was the thought, in order to be able to reach as many people, because recognizing that the cost of wastewater treatment is included in the rent for for all of our renters in Shoreline, whether in multifamily or in private homes, that they are, their rent is impacted by that wastewater bill, so it would, the rebate would go to all. So the thought is it really would be that full amount of the SCL qualified customers.
Isn't wastewater, though, included as, if someone's in an affordable housing unit or a unit that's marked as affordable, and the total cost of living is whatever the number is for Shoreline, isn't, aren't, isn't wastewater one of those utilities that's included in that? So if your total cost exceed that affordability number per month, they're already getting, they would already get a break on that?
I would need to look into that. I did not think that the that the utilities were discounted on those affordable housing units. I thought it was just the rent.
Well, I think it's, I think the rent is discounted.
Yes.
Just for the utilities, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with that, and so I think when we looked at this, the recognition was that they were secondary customers, one might say, of the of the utility. So we could, but this was the method because there's very few, as we talked about back in April, there are the other options for trying to discount, provide the discount to renters of direct customers is quite challenging and a significant administrative burden. So this seemed to reach the the greater, greatest number of of Shoreline residents who are, you know, low income or validated low income through Seattle City Light and and provide a discount equivalent to that percentage of their wastewater bill.
And one more question, this one about credit card fees. What are the, I'd like to know what the annual cost, you don't have to get, if you don't have the numbers now, I'd like to know what the annual costs of those credit card processing fees are for the utility, and then also, what's the percentage of customers paying by card?
Sure, I can get that. I don't have those numbers, but I will get those to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to everybody for the presentation and discussion tonight. I love the very thoughtful questions that are coming in from my council colleagues. I just will be brief and just get back to the policy direction and advice that we've been given and questions that have been posed to us. On this topic of the discount, I was really happy to see that the staff recommendation was for the extended discount at 50% for all residents. I believe that that reflects the values of the majority of our voters in Shoreline and our residents in Shoreline, it's what I should say. If we can, I can pay an additional dollar to make it possible and ease the burden on our lower income residents, I'm happy to do that. And I would say that my personal opinion on the policy direction would reflect the staff. And when it comes to a lot of these, you know, a lot of these very nuanced financials, I trust and respect the work that you guys do so much. Happy to support this in this direction. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you. I too will be very brief and and support the staff recommendation. I, for, I think it was eight years, I was on regional water quality at the King County level, and and water, water charges and are very complicated as are are other utilities that that a city runs or or is involved in having a charge to their to their residents. So I'm very glad to support a reduction even for renters, because as Deputy Mayor had mentioned, I am glad to support someone else who might need a little bit of a reduction if if we would allow it. And it would not be a big burden on on me, and I just believe that when we act as a community, we're all better off. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. And Councilmember Mark, before we get back to you, can we get those policy questions back up, that particular slide? I concur with the Deputy Mayor and Councilmember McConnell, I don't think we all need to go around and say we agree. So I mean, if there is disagreement with the staff recommendation, I'd love to hear from council members, otherwise I think staff can assume that that we are supportive of the staff recommendation, including the 50% discount to all recipients. I only had just a couple of other points. The refund processing fee, that's one of those things that is maddening. You get that, like, it's my money, why are you taking it to give it back to me? That's not a deal breaker for me, but that is the kind of governmental thing that on the policy side, we're the ones who get doorballed in supermarkets, and sometimes it's about, or not doorbell, we get. And sometimes it's about, or not door-belt, we get button-holed in supermarkets. And sometimes it's stuff that minor. I mean, it's just stuff that gets under people's skin. So I would encourage us not to create those little annoying things, particularly for an $8 charge. Second, that's not the discussion of tonight, it's not tonight's discussion. But I leafed through the application fees, and those are very low compared to some of our other fees. So I would encourage us to read as of that as soon as possible. Looks to me like we are significantly undercharging compared on the staff expense. I don't need an answer now, but I would suspect that that may drive some of these other costs because we're subsidizing that particular area when in my view we probably shouldn't be. So with that said, Councilmember Moore, did you have an additional comment?
I had two. Just quickly, Mayor, I completely agree with you on the fees. They're too low and should be raised. And hopefully it'll make a difference by doing so. The one quibble I would have with staff is the eliminating the 8% interest. There, there is some number of people, and Ms. Lane, you will know way better than me, that do not pay wastewater fees for an extended period of time. And when they sell their home, then of course, all those fees get collected. Is there not a middle ground where, once they have reached some dollar value of being in arrears, that the 8% makes sense to start charging?
There could be, that, that may be. To try and do it on all rate pairs, it is a, a huge administrative burden. But if we, if we instituted on customers that perhaps go into foreclosure or, you know, I, going, just going to collections, there's already additional fees. That was, and we're going to be moving because city, the city has different rules than the district. And so we actually have to move people to a lean and to collections a little earlier than the district did. So we'll be moving people to collections a little earlier than they had been before. So they will already have those. But we could consider making a change to the code that would have a sort of trigger. And I could work with our collections attorney to say what would make sense to, you know, what might that trigger be? Because there already is a lot of manual work at that point anyway. So adding interest on wouldn't be as, as much of an administrative burden.
Yeah, I completely agree with, with that approach. I don't think everybody needs it. Some people make a mistake.
Yeah.
But there are some people who take advantage of the system. And from my perspective, that's reasonable thing. If a land, if, if a renter is in a landlord's house, does the renter pay the fee or does the landlord pay the fee?
The landlord is responsible for all of the fees. So it's, now, how they work that out with, with the tenant is, is between them. But ultimately, the, the fee. So if now the renter wants, wants the refund, then I would assume they would pay it in order to get that refund because the landlord probably would just as soon carry that credit. So, so I think ultimately it's the, it's the tenant who would end up paying it.
This is for the $8 refund fee or for the interest?
Oh, for the, the refund. If it's anything on the collection side, the actual fees, those all collections, it goes to the owner of the home.
Okay.
So there's, yes, significant incentive for homeowners to, to take care of those fees right away.
Thank you. I have heard the mayor speak on the, the refund request charge. And I, I, I am not going to argue with him on that. But I do think the 8% interest should kick in for people over some significant dollar amount at, at a place where it's convenient for the city to add it. But not on, it doesn't need to kick in immediately on everybody. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Povey.
Thank you, Mayor. So in regard, in regard to these staff recommendations, I see 163,000 in annual revenue going back, that is if we move forward with this. Ms. Lane, you want to throw a little light on the 163,000? I'm wondering.
That is, certainly happy to speak to that. Prior to the moratorium, that was the annual revenue from late charges. So the thought is, we haven't been getting that revenue. It was not included in this study because we were not collecting it right away. So if we reinstate those late charges, we would assume that we would collect that revenue again. And once that revenue is added, the rates could be, could be reduced appropriately. So we would include that as we're looking at all of the other budgetary, budgetary changes that we said may impact the rates that we presented to you tonight.
That's excellent, I'm glad to hear that. Okay, thank you. So I'm looking at the 10% late fee and the 8%, which, I'm late, I owe $50. Okay, I'm being charged $10, no, 10%. And then there's an 8% interest on that same amount? Is that what it is?
Yes, that is what our, what our current code says that we have not been collecting, yes.
And that's why you're saying we should remove the 8%?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. First, the appendix A is scheduled to go, I mean, is the proposed rates for the fees, is that correct? For 2023?
Yeah, so that is the permit fees and other development-related fees associated with development. And we usually update those as part of the budget or the mid-biennial budget. We do those yearly. These would be coming to the council as part of that regular effort. This was intended to share what we were thinking about because it is a little bit behind the other city fees.
And are these, were these fees sort of projected in the rate study or not?
These are outside of the rate study. They're, they're pretty small and they're intended to go towards funding development review, the wastewater part of development review.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, unlike others on the, like, on the dais, I have a few concerns about these policies. I think the way that's projected in terms of rebates for individuals who the, who are currently getting and need that 50% rate reduction, there's going to be a lag or a certain amount of lag between the time someone, an individual pays their utility bill and then the time that they might get a refund. So it's those kind of things that push people into having to try to juggle. And if we have additional fees and penalties on those individuals, if they can't pay their, those bills right on time, we, we, there's a, I think there's a problem there in that, in terms of trying to get, make these individuals whole. So even if it takes a month or so to refund or return that 50%, even to a larger group, there's gonna be, I think there's gonna be people who hurt, are hurting and will suffer from this policy. And as they're trying to balance, okay, I have to pay now $134 for my rate instead of $70 for my rate every two months. And so, I mean, that's a doubling of expenses, even if they get the refund. And we don't know, I don't know if the staff has a sense of how fat, quickly you can get that refund to individuals. And then I'm not quite sure about the credit card processing fee policy at this point. I'd like more information on that, as my previous question illustrated. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a response from staff?
I just wanted to say that we are in early conversations with Seattle City Light and with, and they actually have recommended now that we work with Hope Link. So I do not have a sense of the timing of when, you know, rebates would, would go out. And I would say that I know some cities that do them, they, they only do them annually. So that is a fair question. What we, what we negotiate or work through, we would certainly keep that in mind and would bring it back. It just seems like the most feasible approach to expanding the discount program to non-homeowners and beyond seniors.
And Mayor, if I could just add, I think the one thing to also remember is currently those individuals don't get any kind of discounts, so.
So other, I have a comment, but anyone else first? I, I, even though I'm also on the dais, I share Councilmember Roberts' concern. I wish there was a better way to do it, but my recollection, even though it was a few months ago, is that we looked into a huge variety of possibilities. And this is far from perfect, but it was what we could come up with. I too would prefer a more direct reduction so that, you know, folks who are that low-income usually don't have a cushion to go from month to month. If they're waiting for $70 next month, I agree with Councilmember Roberts, that may not be good enough. But my recollection is that that's all we can do. Sort of on the same thinking, I respectfully disagree with Councilmember Moore on the 8% interest. It just spirals so fast. And from my limited experience with bankruptcy court, it, it spirals awfully fast for folks and then nobody gets it back. And just at that point, someone's life has been dramatically altered and we don't get anything. So I, I am inclined as much as possible to keep the bill what it actually costs. And collection fees, we shouldn't be using taxpayer money to pay for collections, for sure. But adding interest on it, even though it's a small amount of money, even with some sort of a trigger above the minimum, I'm still not sure that that is in the long run productive for us or the right thing to do for individuals. So I would oppose the 8% interest. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Lane and the rest. That was an excellent presentation and obviously it stirred some informed discussions. Next up is Study Item 8B, which is a discussion of Ordinance Number 970, amending the biennial budget. And I believe Ms. Lane will be taking the lead again.
Yes, I will. And I just realized I was so engrossed in the last one. I have the wrong PowerPoint, Tidap. So bear with me for one second. There it is. Okay, are you able to see that? Excellent. Okay, well, tonight we are discussing Ordinance Number 970, which is our Second Amendment to the 21 and 22 Biennial Budget in 2022. And this is going to be a fairly high-level overview where we're going to focus on the impacts of the, the impacts to the funds. All of the details for the budget amendment are included in the staff report. So I can answer specific questions on those, but otherwise we will focus on the impacts. So this first slide shows the impacts to all of the funds that have changes. There's quite a few funds that did have changes in this amendment. And it takes the total city budget for the biennium from $321 million up to just over $353 million. And as I said, impacts a number of different funds. The primary drivers on these impacts are, we issued the $38.5 million of debt for the Parks Bond. And that is a complex process. You might recall that with that, we refunded or we repaid some of the 2020 LTGO bond anticipation notes. So that's that 2020 LTGO bond fund. And the reason that is going up is because we have to do inter-fund transfers in order to pay those off. So it's complicated and that is there. But you see the creation of the 2022 Parks LTGO Bond Fund. And that just has the addition of the debt service for that. We also, there's some underlying entries in the back as well. The other major change is related to the permitting staff addition that council discussed in May. And so with that, you also see that we had some FTE amendments that again are primarily related to planning and, and public works around permitting staff and addressing the workload challenges there. Those are revenue-supported and were discussed in detail with council in May along with an addition of project-supported halftime GIS technician and the public arts coordinator position, increase of that to full-time. And then the M slide that we have tonight talks about where we expect to end the year with our unassigned and undesigned ending or it'll become the beginning fund balance for 2023. And this takes into account this amendment. And we anticipate we would end with at least $5.3 million. What this does not take into account is any additions to that fund balance that would come from the 21 and 22 operating. We already are confident that there's at least an additional $2 million that would be added to that fund balance because of revenues beyond expectations in 2021. We don't count our expenditure eggs before they're hatched in a biennial budget because we do have authority to spend the budget over the two years. So we wait to determine that actual ending fund balance for the biennium at the, you know, at the end of this year. We'll talk more about what that's projected to be during the budget process, though. So you will see this. The other thing that is not included in here, we do have the designated for the city maintenance facility. We have not moved to a designated amount for general fund contribution to support the potential or anticipated increases to the Parks Bond projects. So council did commit to potentially filling shortfalls because of inflationary impacts on the Parks Bond projects. We, as we work on getting that final budget and we are doing everything we can to seek other funding options such as grants to hopefully minimize that impact on the general fund, but that's not reflected here either. So with that, I will turn it, oh, I'll just mention that we do have this scheduled for action on August 8th. And I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments from council?
Thank you, Mayor.
Please.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. I would say that you're one person I have seen frequently as the city manager since I joined the city council. That's great. My question is related to restoration of strategic technology plan funding. Did you categorize that as capital project?
That is not categorized as capital project. That, that is in our operating budget. That does not mean that if there are aspects of it that are capital, as we account for them, they would be capitalized. But generally, those are software investments, process improvements, and they don't tend to qualify as a capital investment.
Great, that's what I thought, appreciate that.
Other questions or comments? All right, okay, seeing none, we have, can you give us next steps on, on the budget, Ms. Lane?
Yep, so the next step is returning with this for action on August 8th. And currently it's on the consent agenda, but obviously at council's discretion.
Are there any objections to maintaining it on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing this none, we will see this back, seeing none, we will see this back on August 8th on the consent calendar. And thank you as usual, Ms. Lane.
Great, thank you.
And I believe we are concluded for tonight. Thank you.